We'll raise the floor. Pursuant to the Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law of 1975, this meeting notice was sent to the Admiral Park Press on September 1st, 2021, and had been duly advertised in the Admiral Park Press issue of September 3rd, 2021. All municipalities, clerks, of the townships, and the boroughs within the regional district have been duly notified, and the requirements of the posting of notices have been met on September 1st, 2021. Please rise for the pleasure of the members. Mr. Siskado, are there any changes to the executive agenda?
Yes, Mr. President, there was three additional items. In addition to the items that were on the agenda that was printed prior to the meeting, the board also discussed in box number two, the board discussed student discipline matters and student health issues. In box number seven, the board discussed a case under docket number 3:21-CV-08647. And in box number eight, the board discussed personnel health issues.
Thank you. Is that it?
That's it.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of August 26th, 2021? Move.
Second.
Mr. Caffey on the second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Caffey.
Yes.
Mrs. Tagley.
Yes.
Mrs. Flavin.
Yes.
Mr. Moses.
Yes.
Mrs. Finelli.
Yes.
Mr. Weiss.
Yes.
Mr. Bruno.
Yes.
Just a reminder that communications are filed in the office of the Board Secretary. We are now going to have our superintendent's report, Dr. Sampson.
Thank you, Mr. Bruno. So we're going to open this evening with our support staff member of the year being recognized for each of our six high schools. Now, we usually do this at the first meeting of each school year. And so what I'm going to do is I'm going to recognize each support staff member individually. I'll ask Dr. Howland, Dr. Sharp, if they can come up, receive their plaque, photo op for, you know, anybody out there, the family that wants to take a quick photo. And then we'll all come down here and do a quick photo with Mrs. Paula Castro, and we'll go from there, okay? So we're going to open it up with, and I'll just ask each support staff member of the year, please stand when I say your name, because we want to read a few words about you that were submitted by the faculty and staff they can work with. Bonnie Shapiro from Colts Neck High School. Ms. Shapiro has been a paraprofessional at Colts Neck High School for three years over the past year. She has been an integral part of multiple students' success who have cognitive impairments and special needs. Ms. Shapiro has provided much-needed emotional support as well as intense behavioral assistance to our students and volunteered to assist students struggling personally and educationally. Ms. Shapiro always takes the time to meet with students, case managers, and teachers to develop a strategy to assist her students. She is enthusiastic, compassionate, collaborative, consistent, proactive, and kind. Ms. Shapiro uplifts each of her students and helps them strive to be their best, and she is an absolute asset to Colts Neck High School community. Congratulations. Next up, we have Cecilia Vaca from Freehold High School. Cecilia? There you go. Ms. Vaca has been a paraprofessional at Freehold High School for the past three years. Her commitment and dedication to the special education students is evident in her work with the Cognitive Mile Program. Ms. Vaca is always available to take the lead in the classroom, always makes positive connections with the students, and effectively collaborates with teachers and the child study team to develop and implement student interventions for all. She has demonstrated a willingness to always do what is best for students and is always a team player. Ms. Vaca currently holds a Bachelor of Fine Arts in Music and is working to obtain her Elementary Ed and Teacher of Disability certifications. She is an integral part of the Freehold High School community. Congratulations. Next up, we have Maria Gingerelli from Freehold Township High School. Ms. Gingerelli has been a paraprofessional at Freehold Township High School for six years, where she has worked in both the PEP and workplace training programs. Ms. Gingerelli is truly one of a kind. Her dedication to students' programs in the school is unmeasurable. Ms. Gingerelli goes out of her way to support every student in the classroom while always seeking ways to help teachers and her students. Her kindness extends beyond the classroom. She makes every student feel valued and special by providing positive praise for a job well-done or marking major milestones in their lives. Ms. Gingerelli is kind, generous, passionate, and always interested in helping every student and staff member of Freehold Township High School. It's an honor to work with such a dedicated educator at Freehold Township. Next, we have Jeffrey Levine from Howe High School. Mr. Levine has been a paraprofessional at Howe High School for the past 10 years. Mr. Levine assists teachers and students with technology integration and further develops his skills by attending workshops led by the teacher coaches. He always engages his students in a positive manner, always finds a way to encourage them and motivate them. Mr. Levine always offers extra assistance, is often seen rephrasing questions, engaging in small group discussions with students to help them learn. Mr. Levine genuinely enjoys each student and is someone the teachers can always depend on to go above and beyond at Howe High School. It is an absolute pleasure working with Mr. Levine as part of the Howe High School community. Congratulations. Next, we have Catherine Smith from Manalpin High School. Ms. Smith has served as a paraprofessional in the district for the past 11 years. In all of her roles, Ms. Smith has always put the emotional needs and interests of her students first and has always sought ways to positively impact the lives of the students she serves. Ms. Smith maintains a mutual respect for her students and embraces the unique qualities of each and every student. Through the years, she has demonstrated her belief that each student is important, that student voice matters. If you observe her in class, you'll see her encouraging students to participate and always supporting them to accomplish tasks. Ms. Smith is empathetic and always willing to listen. She has demonstrated a deep sense of commitment to everything she undertakes at Manalpin High School and is well-deserving of this award. Congratulations. Then we have Rosalba Cortella from Marlborough High School. Ms. Cortella has been a paraprofessional at Marlborough High School for 19 years. She is an absolutely valuable member of our school community who greatly contributes to the well-being and academic needs of all students. She is not only reliable but incredibly flexible. She is always willing to take on a new role or additional assignments. While Ms. Cortella works closely with one student this particular school year, she seamlessly accommodates several other students in the classroom. She always demonstrates adaptability, especially dealing with challenging circumstances. Last year, when faced with the demands of online learning, she quickly collaborated with her colleagues and learned additional ways to support her students, always going above and beyond for the students she serves. We greatly appreciate her efforts and the positive impact that she makes every single day at Marlborough High School. Congratulations. The seats recipients, if you can come down here, we'll get a nice picture, be website and social media famous. And Ms. Paula Castro will share those photos with everyone tomorrow as well. She took a good shot.
Any family members that want the photo ops, now's the...
Shapiro's, come on, let's go.
And friends and family, you're welcome to stay through the remaining of the meeting, but certainly not expected to, so... Nice to meet you guys. Take care. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Take care. I wanted to see you. All right, so I'll continue. So obviously, it's September 30th. We're about a month in now to the school year. You know, as we noted at the August meeting, certainly wasn't what we'd hoped for last spring, but all things considered, we had a very strong opening. You know, few to none, no issues across the buildings as we opened up. Like everybody else, we're dealing with the bus shortage, bus driver shortage, I should say, that's impacted the state. That caused us earlier in the school year to double some runs, consolidate some other runs, but we've been able to fill approximately, according to Mr. Boyce, about 90% of all of our extracurricular and athletic runs, which obviously this district is known for. And I just want to give a special thank you to the Transportation Department, who have really worked night and day over the first month of school, because this is a statewide shortage, certainly something that we've been sounding the alarm about for years, actually. It's not new, although the newspapers have portrayed it as such. And hopefully, there's some relief in terms of what the state process looks like to earn a CDL license, because that's the very first step to making some of this happen. Although, we feel very, very good about where we are with the busing. We conducted all of our back-to-school nights in person, went very, very well. You know, there was just a strong belief amongst the faculty and staff that, you know, we wanted to make sure that back-to-school night was done in person and live. And I'm very proud about how that went. Couple issues, you know, the state is mandating the what's called the Start Strong assessment that our students, some of our students will be taking in lieu of the mandated state exams. These are designed to be quick diagnostics to measure learning loss. You know, we've talked a little bit about the concept of learning loss in many ways being a bit of an artificial construct. We would, we certainly would have preferred to utilize some other tools, but we will oblige the state with their requirements and hopefully have some meaningful information from those assessments with our students. We'll see. We're also, believe it or not, the state is going through with what's known as CUSAC monitoring, which we're up for again. This is usually a three-year data cycle. The difficulty with this year is that there's really only one year of reliable data they even use, and so we're up. Monmouth County Superintendent's Roundtable, we just drafted a letter today that we're sending out in the morning to the Department of Ed, you know, requesting for a postponement of that. It's not where anybody wants to be spending their resources with, you know, filling out compliance checklist with the entire administrative team. But I have a funny feeling that that's still going through, so we've been preparing for it and we're ready to roll. Our only, our only major concern is that there's only really one year worth of data to look at, and so I'm not sure what conclusions might be drawn from that. Obviously, we've launched the social media and signage and other activities related to the referendum on Election Day. We just encourage everyone to take a look at the website and some of the things that we've posted on Facebook, social media outlets, you know, Instagram and the such, Twitter. We presently have, you know, somewhere probably between 40 and 50 small group meetings set up where our building principals and other team members from the district are visiting with town council, visiting with rec departments, going out and about in the community to explain the referendum. We've pared this referendum down significantly from the previous referendum. It is purely just paving and roofing needs, as we've discussed here at the past couple meetings. The beauty of this is that if it does pass, the state will pick up 40% of the cost of the referendum. And this is critical work. This is, you know, so we identified three tiers of roofing and paving across the district. This is all the tier one work that is immediate pressing, needs to be done immediately. So it's going to be done one way or the other. The question for us is whether or not we want to receive a 40% discount, have the state absorb 40% of that cost. That obviously limits the impact to our programs. And Mr. Boyce did a nice video sort of tying in the entire financial situation of the district, and I think it's important, I'll note it again. One of the things that we continue to rehash over and over every year, because we're a very different district. It's a high school-only district. Our school community lasts for four years versus a traditional K-12, where there might be families who are part of that school system for seven, for eight years, even more, right? Sometimes 12 years, but all the way through. And so they build an attachment, they understand the external impacts of what's happening in the district, and there's a real awareness to what is happening. Ours are very quick, four years, this is a very quick time period. Parent and student moves in, if they move through in that four years, that's it. And so we feel the need every year to really take the time to explain the financial situation, explain why we're on the shores that we've landed on. And it's pretty simple, right? Senate Bill 2 has absolutely and will continue to devastate this area and other areas around us, Tom's River, Brick, and other places like that, because we are losing $30 million in state aid. What the state is making the argument is that our communities in the Freehold Regional High School District do not pay enough, their fair share of taxes, is what they're arguing. The difficulty is, we've been cut so far, we cannot, we couldn't possibly tax our way out of it. There's a 2% cap on the tax levy. So we are, the state draws a line that says what adequate education should cost. The Freehold Regional High School District is over $5 million under that number. And one of the things that we made the initial argument about S2 with was saying, if you're going to reduce the aid to districts, then reduce them to adequacy, right? What the state says they should be funded. That's not what has happened here in Freehold Regional. And so as a result, and as a result of that $30 million reduction, we actually lucked out from a financial standpoint with COVID. Because if we didn't save the money that we saved when we closed our doors, and if we didn't receive the federal funds we received, it would be, we're still $6 million in the hole this budget here. We would have been how much further in the hole, Mr. Boyce? Maybe?
Another five.
Right. $11 million in the hole? So it's a bad story no matter what. And it's, and we're, we are looking at this referendum as an opportunity to maintain some of the critical elements of our infrastructure and to do it with the state paying 40% of it while we manage this S2 drawdown, which is brutal. And what I've said over and over and over again is to encourage the communities to go out and to contact their legislators about, legislators about this, because the long-term impact of this is not something the district is going to be able to even remotely provide the level of service that we've provided here. And I will note once again, this is an efficient district. This is one of the most efficient, one of the most financially efficient districts in the state of New Jersey. Period. Our per pupil cost is $3,500 under the average high school cost, per pupil. So that means what we do here, we do for $3,500 less every single student we serve. You couple the $30 million loss on top of that, on top of the fact that we have six high schools, five of whom are all over 50 years old, this building is legitimately 100 years old, and those infrastructure costs are huge. So we are trying through this referendum, there's no frill here, we're going after the roofing and paving that needs to be done, and we're hoping that the state will pick up, we know that if it's passed, the state will pick up 40% of that cost, which will allow us to alleviate some of the pressure on reducing our other programs that serve kids. That's the goal. As far as COVID and where we are, you know, the Monmouth County is still in the orange in what's known as the Cali Index. You know, we're in constant contact with our health officers. I can say this, that the state rate of positivity is somewhere around 6%. In our schools, it's less than 1%, which tells me that schools are safe. Period. You know, we have the, we still are quarantining students, but now it is at least with three feet rather than six feet. That has allowed us to quarantine far fewer close contacts. And obviously, the CDC and the New Jersey Department of Health and Department of Ed and the governor, through the governor's executive order, masking is required. If you're not wearing your mask, you have to be quarantined if you're within three feet, within six feet, and you're close contact of somebody who's either positive. So we haven't, we haven't had any in-school transmission, feel very good about where we are. I do think, I think it's important to note publicly, the media was making, you know, sort of sensationalizing some of the numbers over the past couple days in some neighboring districts, and I would just counsel everybody to take a look at the state positivity rate versus the rate that all schools, even those with quote-unquote outbreaks are reporting. They're far lower, which again tells me that our schools are safe, we feel good about where we are. You know, it's, obviously, the hot days when we first opened were difficult. We're moving through that. I don't think anybody has any magic eight ball that tells us when this will end. You know, we're certainly asking for that every time we meet with any of the department officials or any of the officials from the governor's office. So as of September 30th, it's all systems go, Mr. Bruno. That's my report.
Thank you. We do not have any board reports tonight. Mr. Siskado, would you like to give an instruction about public participation before we start?
Sure. Just to reiterate, the board uses public comment as an opportunity to listen to resident concerns, not to debate issues or enter into a question-and-answer session. As is the board's typical procedure, out of respect for members of the public who may wish to speak, the board requests that each speaker limit comments to three minutes. The board does not recognize or permit proxies or the practice of yielding time to another speaker. Each speaker must be recognized by the presiding board officer, tonight that's Mr. Bruno, and announce their name and municipality residence. Once that is completed, the three-minute allotment per speaker will begin. All comments are to be directed to the presiding board officer and not individual members of the board. Once the three-minute period has expired, will be asked to include your comment, step away from the podium so the next speaker can have a chance to speak. While the board understands that certain matters, such as the mask mandate in Executive Order 251 and the vaccine mandate in Executive Order 253, can be emotional and evoke strong feelings on both sides, the board will maintain a level of decorum towards all speakers, and everyone is expected to maintain a tone of courtesy and civility towards the board and more importantly, to each other. As such, no calling out, shouting down, or disruptions from any of the audience we permitted, answered, or tolerated. Anyone that cannot abide by that will be asked, please leave. As noted in the materials that were available in the back of the room prior to the meeting, as reflected in the board's policy, the portion of the meeting tonight for public participation is limited to 40 minutes. Since not all issues before the board can or will be resolved immediately, the board in responding to issues raised during public comment may seek additional information or ask Dr. Sampson or one of his administrators to look into the matter. In order to allow as many people as possible that may wish to speak, the board, Dr. Sampson, will hold in responses to comments after the conclusion of the public comment period rather than respond to individual speakers.
Okay, thank you. First participant tonight in the public participation is Dr. Wallace from Manalpin.
Good evening, I, um, I know a lot of you in the recent, a lot of emails from me and a lot of certified letters. This whole thing has really, there's a lot of gray there that I'm not underestimating. So my children were denied their medical exemption, and when they were denied their religious exemption, it prompted me to submit over-eyes in. And I did it twice, and I'm learning, and I'm going to continue to do so to get more answers. Within the over-eyes, I did ask for policies, their school policy, which I have, and honestly, the policy is very light, it's a very light policy. These have been the recommendations from the COE, so I got it, okay, not bad, because we're very good on the policy. So now I'm looking at a lot of policy and contract between the physician and the school board. So you don't have any policy or any guidance regarding medical exemption whatsoever. I was told, you can't tell the doctor what to do. Well, when I'm looking at his contract, there's a lot in here of guidance of what he should be doing and other entity, the other things that are occurring in school is right here. Also, his contract is that state that he shall, the note to the inspector, shall provide such services in accordance with professional standards and shall use the same care and skills, the skills as it would in the case of a private patient. Well, Dr. Balar did not treat my children like a private patient. He got a letter and denied me. I brought this to your attention. You guys ignored it. I brought your attention multiple times with emails and letters. No response. So now, let's get down to the whole identification. So now, Mrs. Balar holds all responsibility with the exception of negligence under part. Straight here, it states except for claims arising through negligence, recklessness, and local misconduct. I will also call Dr. Balar. My husband spoke to him. His answer was, I'm following CDC guidance. We asked Dr. Balar to provide the CDC guidance. There is no guidance regarding medical exemption. So case by case, while according to, every time you refer back to Executive Order 251 and 253, it does state that you should have a policy. Your policy doesn't refer to anything about this. So now, it's very subjective, and it gets to be very personal. So now, I feel like my children are being attacked. Now, religious exemption. We state that we can't follow religious exemption because this doesn't state anything in the executive order. Well, the executive order has its power from the Constitution. So how dare the executive order say you can't use a religious exemption? Because we have a Constitution that gives us that right. So now, you cannot say I cannot have religious exemption. Continue on that policy of what masks might be to wear. So we did look at exactly what we received with the welcome letter. The welcome letter did not tell you exactly what type of mask to wear. It just said, no T-shirts, no gaiters, no mask without. None of us, any kind of I spoke to, we never received the CDC guidance of what masks to wear. So when my son was told the day that he'd been wearing a mask because his religious exemption was denied, he came home, he was told to wear a mask. So I looked at the health and safety guidance of the welcome letter.
Dr. Wallace.
And there is no health and safety guidance. And with that said, there's hypocrisy going on, because personnel is sitting in rooms with no mask on, we had all recording, and my son is getting out that, my daughter is feeling intimidated by teachers, can't say anything, they're told how to drink water, what to drink water, where to drink water, and nothing is making sense whatsoever. So I'm going to continue, I'm going to proceed. I sent emails, I sent certified letters. You have studied your hours, answered some questions already, you have not answered it, and I would really appreciate that you get back to me on it. Because I am building a case, I'm working with people right now, and I'm really getting fed up, I'm not getting these answers that I want. And I'll also send an email before, and we'll see what happens. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up is Jackie Catalano from Manalpin. Jackie, did I ruin last name?
No, I got it.
Okay.
Thank you. So I'm here today to ask the public for the district's policy that our staff coming out is non-lineral or cross-danger to our students. It's my understanding that there's no such policy yet, and unfortunately, because of that, my child was exposed to an incident I am not aware of, but I feel the need to share with the public. There was an incident at Manalpin High School in August where a staff member came out as non-lineral with football. This coming out statement by itself is not the issue, nor is the staff member's non-lineral status or... status or request to be called by an alternate pronoun. What is the issue here is what then follows that staff member's statement. The staff member took upwards of five minutes to then decide to educate our children on the science behind gender fluidity. Five minutes about science supporting the ideology that there are more than two genders in this world. This staff member took it upon itself to educate my child in eating on another football player's leg day about gender fluidity, society's evolution of gender identity, and their personal opinions about gender identity, and their own personal gender status using various other phrases and words supporting transgender ideology. No other staff member intervened at the time. I've been told that this staff member had full approval from administration to do so, and upon learning of this, I immediately called the school, who told an investigation would be launched about the conversation without students, and that someone would get back to me. No one got back to me. One week went by, no one got back to me. I called the school again, and spoke to administration, and was told the staff member claimed they were uncomfortable after coming out as non-binary in front of the kids, and therefore felt the need to back up the reasoning behind his choice with more information for our children. So because the staff member was uncomfortable, they got to educate my child about why he should be okay with cross-gender and gender fluidity, he got told that science supports this ideology. He was uncomfortable. I was then informed that the staff member was told this wasn't acceptable speech, and before they addressed any other students about the non-binary status, they would be able, they would have to have their supervision of another staff member. Clearly, because of that, the school saw the extended use of free language of the staff member, yet when I asked the school to have that staff member apologize for the football team for crossing that line, I was told no. I then asked the school to take responsibility and let the parents know this incident occurred via a letter, and again, I was told no. Both times I was told it would go against the legal limits of the staff member. What about my child's rights? So I'm here for two reasons, because I feel that the Freehold Regional High School District parents have a right to know that this incident occurred. It is our right to educate our children on this matter and share our fellow's personal beliefs on the matter, especially if staffs only be able to say whatever they want, we should know ahead of time. And also, the second reason is that I asked for policy around staff members coming out for our children about gender identity, and I was told there is none. I'm here to say that there needs to be a policy on this, a clear-cut policy, clear guidelines on how and when it is appropriate for staff members to share their identity status with our children and exactly what is allowed to be said. There needs to be guidelines. I will be filing over on this matter tomorrow, but I need to share here my complete and utter disappointment, Freehold Regional High School District cannot handle this matter, and my request for an apology or abuse of statements to the parents. After multiple attempts on my behalf to see you do the right thing, I felt the need to come here and share it this way. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Caroline Vrati from Freehold.
Hi, Caroline. Thank you. I'm going to start out on a positive, so.
Good.
First of all, it was very nice to hear that schools are, you know, safe and that there are no major quarantines or anything going on. I know I've been very pleased not to hear of any, because that was a concern of mine, that they were going to start sending kids home for two weeks at a time and this and that, so I'm very happy to hear that. I also just wanted to give a shout out, my kids are back in Freehold Township High School, and they're loving it, they're very happy to be back, they're very happy to be with everyone. I've noticed an absolute change in my children. Being back in school, it's a very difficult, you know, year and a half with them all over the place, in school, out of school, you know, online, all that, and marked improvement in my children, their attitude and everything. So I just want to say that, thank you for that. I did speak last month about the mask mandate and my concerns about additional mandates that would be coming down in regards to our children. What I want to do is again reiterate to the board, I would love to encourage you to take a stance and be strong and advocate for our children and stand with the other districts that have been standing up to our governor and mandates that are coming down, and, you know, just stand up for our children in regards to, you know, masking mandates and options and concerns about potential vaccine mandates that might be coming down the pipe, especially with this governor's race coming on. So I'm very concerned, and I hope that you will stand strong and be strong and work with the other districts in the area and take a stance on behalf of our children. Lastly, I wasn't going to say anything about this, but after the last comment, I'm going to make an annotation about this, and I'll follow up with my principal on that. But I was a little concerned earlier this year, within the first two days of school, my children came to me or told me that in several of their classes, they were asked for their preferred pronouns. And I thought that was very unusual, and I wanted to follow up regarding, apparently there is no policy, but I thought it was a very odd thing for them to be asked by the staff. So I do have a name for you, I'll give it to you after this. But that was it, but thank you, thank you for a great start to this morning, I appreciate it.
Thank you. I'm really happy about it too, it's like going into October, we're open to all. But thank you for starting off on a positive. Okay, our next speaker tonight, Christine Wallace. Chris Wallace. Chris?
Christian.
Christian, where are you?
Oh.
Hi, Chris.
Uh, you can call me Christian.
Speak, gentlemen.
Yeah. Well, my name is CJ Wallace. I'm a student out of Anelton High School, I'm a sophomore. And public speaking really is my thing, so excuse me if I mess up or something. But I just want to say how like masks affect my life daily and how I feel uncomfortable around school, like all the teachers and staff looking at me. I feel like I'm being targeted by the principals and the teachers being singled out from every other student, because some other people are doing the same thing I'm doing, like taking off my mask every once in a while for mask breaks, but they don't get in trouble for it, but I do. Sometimes when I see mask breaks in some of my classes, the teachers look at me, I'm here to discuss, they tell, they look at me and squint in their eyes, and it doesn't make me feel comfortable. Also, when I got called down to the principal one time, the assistant principal, I had a talk with him about some incident with a teacher, and he told me that he didn't wear his mask in his office. So why should I have to wear it in my classroom if he doesn't have to wear it? I don't see that anyway. One time when I went to the nurse, because I was denied my medical exemption and my religious exemption, the medical, I felt like I had it, and I had it, and I told the nurses to wear my mask, and she completely laughed at me. She said, she laughed at the point that it was the mask. Mr. Dillon, my principal, he, I came to school on the first day and without a mask on, and he, he brought me to his office and he told me to leave school, I didn't wear a mask. So he told me to put on a mask, and I came back the next day with a mask, and apparently that wasn't enough. Apparently, wearing a mask that fits the CDC guidelines was not enough. He said it didn't fit me and that he could see my face, so I don't know why it wasn't enough. And the assistant principal told me that I shouldn't be taking down a mask to drink water in the hallways. I don't feel like that's right, I don't feel like he should teach me how to drink water. And when I was trying to talk to the principal one time, he was ignoring me, he walked straight by me without answering my question. So I'm just saying, this affects my daily life, and thank you guys.
Thank you, Chris.
So I wasn't on the schedule to speak, but can I just finish off the Wallace show?
Wallace show.
Yeah, I figured I'm the only one that hasn't spoken yet, so I might as well. I haven't spoke to you, I haven't spoken to you yet, or spoken in front of the board. But, you know, I will say, we're happy to be in this district, you know, it's a great school district, we love it, we love really how you guys present yourselves as well. There are some issues, obviously, that we brought up and CJ brought up, and what I wanted to piggyback on with him was the CDC guidance of masks, okay? And that certain teachers are okay with the mask selection, and then others seem to be making up their own criteria with my son and also my daughter, who is, you know, she's the kindest, you know, she would rarely ever speak up at all. And she's getting really kind of harassed actually by one teacher, she's being harassed, you know, saying that there were emails sent to her, and she didn't answer the emails, she never got the emails. So it was really one specific incident that my poor daughter had to go through about a mask. So this did happen the first day with Christine going to school, and we did come back with a mask. We actually looked at the CDC mask guidelines, which I have right here, I'm sure you guys have looked at that. And the masks that we sent back our children with, do choose masks that have washable breathable fabric, completely cover your nose and mouth, fists snugly against the side of your face, and have a, to prevent air from leaking out of the top of the mask. Then also at the bottom saying that we should not be wearing N95 masks. So my question to you guys, are their teachers wearing N95 masks? I saw one today, in here, wearing a N95 mask. If we're going to be sticklers on the rules, let's be sticklers on the rules, right? The mask that we sent our son in with was this, you know, covers the nose and mouth, breathable, washable fabric, you know? So I would just ask you to speak with the teachers that are in the school districts, make sure that there's uniformity, and make sure that they're not using their own fear or bias that they're having, if they indeed have one. Just make sure that there's, that the CDC guidance is, CDC guidance is really followed. That's my request and what I ask of you guys, because our, because our suffering, and my kids are trying, and I think that sometimes it seems like the ones that do have a hard time are seeming like they're bad kids, or like they're being a child with a bad attitude, or just being teenagers. Well, maybe they're suffering, maybe they really are. So that's my only thing I want to say.
Okay, so we're going to move along with personnel negotiations.
Bruno.
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry.
We have one addendum.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Siskatow, can you read that in?
Yes. Will be item J14, resolved by the board to deny the residency appeal heard in the executive session and to remove student ID number 2120373 for lack of residency.
Thank you. So we're moving along with personnel and negotiations. Do I have a motion to approve items G1 through G16?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
I, it was, it is, Mr. Weiss, Ms. Capiello.
Thank you. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Capiello?
Yes.
Mrs. Higley?
Yes, but I abstained on G6 for Christopher Provo and G11 for Joanne Becker.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yeah.
Mrs. Finelli?
Yes.
Mr. Weiss?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes. Okay, we're going to take program operations, building, transportation, and the physical plan, H1 through I2. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you. Any discussion? No discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Capiello?
Yes.
Mrs. Higley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Mr. Moses? Mrs. Finelli?
Yes.
Mr. Weiss?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Now we're going to take educational programs and administration, it's J1 through K3. Motion, please. Move. Second.
Second.
Mrs. Capiello.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Capiello?
Yes.
Mrs. Higley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Mrs. Finelli?
Yes.
Mr. Weiss?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
All motion, staffs, thank you. Any old business members, any old business? No old business, okay. Any new business? May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, adjournment, so we have two motions for adjournment. All of those in favor?
Aye.
All ayes. Have it. Thank you.